So we're just going to be looking through the most recent housing committee on the second of November twenty twenty two. Really, this is kind of an opportunity to see a little bit more about how councils work and a kind of, so I guess just to give tips to other people in other areas to work out, okay, how can you actually see positive changes by using housing committees? Because this is a really interesting one. It did get a little bit Jackie Weaver at one point, but you can kind of stay tuned for that. But yes, as I say, this is going to be us just kind of just chipping in as and when we've got something to say over the most recent committee, which is on YouTube.
And the first item on the agenda is questions from the public and members of the council. We've been notified of three questions from members of the public who aren't able to attend this evening. So I will start by reading them out and some of them are quite long. So the first one is from Mike Hayden and he says, I understand that there are currently hundreds of children included in the households accommodated by Bedford Borough Council in temporary accommodation at the moment. I'm sure everyone agrees that this is not good for them. How does the council consider location of temporary accommodation in relation to children's schooling and support networks? And is there anything else that can be done to minimise the disruption and distress that arises from living in temporary accommodation? So thank you, Mike, for that question and.
So I'll just come in here with this question. And basically, the figure we've got from the last F O Y we did, which was from back in June twenty twenty two, I think, was that there was three hundred and two children in temporary accommodation. So and it's probably higher than that now. So there's probably, you know, approaching four hundred children in temporary accommodation. And as the question alluded to then, there's often issues around families having to move multiple times, having to move schools at very late notice. Often accommodation is cramped. So there's a lot of things about it which is going to make it unpleasant for the families living there and particularly going to have an impact on children. This kind of also ties in with the BBC Leakees report that happened recently where they interviewed one of my people I was working with, who'd just kind of been stuck in a different town and had to kind of arrange school places at a very last minute kind of thing. Like very, very distressing for them. And so really, you know, just I guess a little bit background about the way these questions work. Councillors have loads and loads of different competing problems, you know, you could list them, you know, all there's various kind of really important aspects of what the council does. And these councillors are elected to try and do their best, but they're obviously spinning a lot of plates. Sometimes the questions like this is really just to kind of raise awareness of an issue with the councillors. So here, you know, we're kind of making a point that there is a large number of children in temporary accommodation. And essentially, just just to kind of get councillors thinking about what they might be able to do to improve things for people. I mean, I think there certainly are things that could be improved, but that's the kind of background of the question. And another thing just to make, just to raise at this point in the meeting is that there is still a lot of clumsy language around homelessness. So there were still councillors who conflate rough sleeping with homelessness. And obviously, people who are rough sleeping are homeless. But ultimately, you know, one sense, rough sleeping numbers in Bedford are really low now, something like, you know, less than a handful is the official official statistic. Whilst there are a record number of homeless households in temporary accommodation. When myself and John, Kate and Shannon talk, we're talking about homelessness and the legal definition. So we're not really, you know, we'll try and specify if it's rough sleeping. But that's really kind of, you know, I think that's going to be an issue as this meeting progresses is being a little bit clumsy with these terms. So that's something I'll just point a sight at this point as well.
It's very, very good question. And naturally, we don't, we wouldn't like any child to be living in temporary accommodation. But unfortunately, that does happen, but and a lot is done to avoid it. So I do know that officers work extremely hard to find as every way possible to ensure that the temporary accommodation that they are in is of good standard. And indeed, the council, we've been investing in buying up properties that for temporary accommodation. And some of these are specifically able to accommodate families. And indeed, I've been to some of the the new properties that we have purchased in St Peter's Street and also in Tavistock Street, where we've got a new, a new block of flats, which will be starting to be used very shortly. And they are, they've got accommodation in them that take families and with the good number of bedrooms as well. So I wonder though if Lee wants to add to that.
Before he does add to that, I mean, just to kind of recognise what the council's done. So in the last few years, the council's invested something like fifteen million pounds. I'm not quite sure what the exact figure is. And I'm not quite sure how, how or when that's been spent. But certainly what we're seeing is that the council is buying its own temporary accommodation stock, which is a very sensible thing to do. Because it not only means you can actually discharge your statutory duties, but it also means you're not leaking money to nightly let sort of landlord type operations, which which are bad on a number of levels. Again, you know, although we're going to disagree with much of, yeah, some of the stuff that's discussed in the meeting today. That is just kind of just putting out there that clearly the Bedford Borough Council made a political decision to try and discharge duties as lawfully as they could. And that has resulted in them investing in our own stock, which is again, you know, just to kind of recognise that has been an important thing, which is good. It kind of leads on to the complexities we're going to see later on in the meeting around. If Bedford's discharging its duties lawfully and surrounding areas aren't, you're going to have a net migration of people to Bedford, which is an issue which which needs to be dealt with basically or kind of managed carefully.
I think one of the reasons that the council is able to focus on these sorts of issues though because people like us are asking the questions at these meetings and we're sort of holding them to account. And for me, I just want to sort of recognise how powerful these questions can be. And I think this video has got like sixty four views, which is quite high for a local council housing committee. But can you imagine if every resident who had a question around housing or homelessness came and asked the power that would have?
Thank you, Colleen. And of course, I do agree as well that it's not at all good for children to be in temporary accommodation. And we do do as much as possible to prevent that. When we do get to the point of offering temporary accommodation to a family, the team will give as much consideration as possible to the location, taking into account the the family's needs, particularly locations to schools. Well, there is a high demand for accommodation from homeless families at the moment. And in reality, it's not always possible to find accommodation that's in the same area of the borough that they've been living in. But if people are required to move away from the children's schools, the homelessness team will then liaise with the council's schools transport team to establish what can be done in terms of assisting the family with getting the children to school and minimising any disruption to their education. And they will also contact children's services if there are any other concerns about the impact of homelessness on the the children's wellbeing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Lee. And once again, Mike, yeah, it's something that we would like to avoid, but sometimes it does happen. And but the accommodation we've been really trying hard to get and have purchased, especially those ones which are very suitable for family accommodation. So. Then is from Shannon Johnson and it reads, the report for the meeting agenda assumes that those with medical needs have a disability, although disability is not recorded specifically. Could the council specifically ask people during the application process whether they have a disability? And if so, what reasonable adjustments to the service are needed? Not just in terms of the characteristic of the home they move into, but also the terms of the disabilities that would affect someone's ability to go through the application process itself. For example, a learning difficulty to ensure that everyone's needs are identified and responded to appropriately. So again, Lee, are you able to answer that, please?
Before it does, again, just to kind of give a bit of background around this. Now, we're certainly kind of learning a lot of good stuff around Equality Act from Dowey Street at the moment. We've actually been kind of going on a training thing with them. And this is something which, you know, many councils get wrong. I mean, I'm working with someone who's working with a different council. And we made the councillor aware from day one that that two of the family members had quite significant disabilities. And there was no record of that council ever taking that into account. So I know Bedford's done some work around this again, you know, just to kind of give you a bit of background, a few years ago now, we asked a question to an F O Y to the council, asking what training staff go on around the Equality Act? And the answer was basically, there wasn't any. And as a result of that F O Y, the council housing team was put on the Equality Act training, which I think has resulted in some improvement. So again, just to kind of see how this kind of this, you have these, these kind of themes that thread through these different meetings. Essentially, there is, there is nothing, as far as I know, in terms of Bedford Borough Council's assessment process, which asks the question specifically, do you have a disability and records it? And then asks, is there anything we need to do differently in order to to make sure your, you know, the service you get is okay? Which is, which is basically a legal requirement. So Sarah Stein and I talked about last week in the training we went to was that, you know, first of all, it's on the council to be vigilant, you know. If there are indications that someone might have a disability, they need to to ask more questions about it. But also just the fact that often council, and this is generally, you know, generally councils' approach to disabilities is that they'll ask set questions around, you know, can you need, you need help cooking and cleaning and stuff like that, which actually doesn't, doesn't cover the breadth of issues that might be covered by disability. And as you say, John, lots of people probably meet the legal definition of having disability, but don't actually realise it. So let's see what Lee says.
Certainly, Colleen. So the online application form is part of an I C T system that's provided by an external supplier that we use to, first of all, enable people to make the application and then to be able to assess their eligibility. And we would need to check with the supplier whether they could offer this type of functionality. At the moment, there is an option for people to tick to say that they have a disability, but it's not a compulsory field. And therefore, the the information we've got, we don't feel is reliable enough to to report on. So we will ask that question of the supplier. But it is a very good suggestion. And one thing that we can do quite easily is to actually include a message on the letter that we send out whenever somebody submits their initial application, which explains what they need to provide to support the application. And basically, we'll put a sentence on the start of the letter to ask them to let us know if they need any help with the application process due to a disability. And we will be able to do that very quickly.
So that is a really cool outcome. Sorry, Shannon, go for it.
I remember hearing him say this for the first time and I loved it because he seemed keen on it as well. And also, I think he he got the point of the question, which wasn't just about sort of the physical aspects of a house, but the process of applying and what people might need throughout that. Is it, you know, only phone calls or only letters or, you know, what sort of reasonable adjustments need to be made? And the fact that he's basically gone, here's a quick fix with his magic wand, which I'm sure, you know, he's not able to do often. It's really lush to see.
Yeah, and I guess just one, one bit of follow up for us will just be just to, just to see how that plays out and kind of how that question is is formed. As I say, a really good example of how a question in a committee just gets a nice quick change, which will actually potentially affect hundreds of people every year. So it's very cool.
Okay, thank you, Lee. And I hope that answers Shannon's question and that she's pleased with the response. So the last one then is, is a long one to read out. It's from Katie Welborn and it says, it's really good that the council is exploring waiting times for those with medical needs in detail. And whilst the report is really helpful, it doesn't say how many people in total are in each category of bedrooms required in relation to the table five point ten. Further details are on table five point twelve. But this doesn't give a breakdown of those without a medical need. It's therefore not possible for the statistics to get an overall average for the number of additional days that people with medical needs have to wait compared to those without medical needs. Using weighted for averages would suggest that people who have waited fifty seven days more than those without medical needs. But this isn't precise. The report also doesn't say whether it takes longer for people with medical needs to become active on the register due to having to provide additional evidence for those medical needs. So potentially, people would have to, would have an additional delay to be accepted onto the register in the first place. Would it be possible for the council to provide figures for those, for how many of the one thousand six hundred and fifty eight households are in each bedroom category and indicate how much longer it takes from the first point of contact to the point of going live on the register for those without, with and without medical needs? I hope I've read that okay. As I said, it was quite long and very detailed. And I perhaps, I don't think, I doubt whether Lee could just answer that straight away. So could I ask that you provide Katie with a written response, Lee, please?
Yeah, yes, certainly. I would need to go away and investigate the reporting functionality around those particular points. I wouldn't be able to give an answer here and now, but certainly we could provide a written response.
The question couldn't really be any, any shorter, I guess, but it kind of allused the fact, you read the report on face value. It looks like people have to wait an extra thirty or so days. But if you actually look at it a bit more carefully, it's probably close to double that, which is kind of why this missing stat needs to be added in. And also this kind of this, this issue of, you know, people are having to apply more medical evidence that's going to take potentially longer anyway. So this, this all comes back to a question we asked, I think, something like two years ago, where we did an F O Y. And it, you know, it kind of indicated that people with disabilities were having to wait much longer. And so this is kind of an outworking of that. There's still kind of some lack of precision around this because they're still talking about medical needs when actually disabilities might potentially, you know, not, not necessarily coincide all the time with that definition. So in my view, you know, they, they should, you know, they, they should be stat specifically about people with disabilities in order to actually inform the council. But ultimately, you know, the point of this theme is to get the council to consider their, you know, public sector equality duty and make sure that people with disabilities don't have to wait longer than than people without disabilities, which is kind of the way the law should work. So this is going to be something, again, I think we'll be sort of tracking.
Just want to add that obviously Katie's question mentioned that it takes longer for people to actually get on the register if they have medical needs, because subsequently they have to produce a lot of documentation around that before they actually go live, in essence, having to prove that they've got these medical needs, which is fair enough. All I'd like to say to the viewing audience is basically, if anyone's doing a housing register application on behalf of a client, for example, it's well worth, before applying, is getting as much medical evidence as you can and uploading that to the, to the housing register application so that there is not this delay. I know that's not possible in all cases because a lot of people apply unsupported and they're unaware that they have to produce medical evidence until the council then asks them. But if anyone's supporting anyone that's doing an application, it's worth uploading as much medical evidence as you can in the first instance and it'll speed up the process.
Easy way on council business.
Which case then we'll move on to item number five, which is the housing register waiting times to which the some of the questions referred to. So Lee, if you'd like to respond to this and make a start.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. So, so this report was in response to a request from the committee to investigate whether there are differences in waiting times for social housing between people with disabilities and those without disabilities. The, the information provided is comparing people who are eligible to go onto the housing register because of medical grounds. And the reason for that is with the data we've got, it's not easily to, we can't easily separate out people with disabilities and people who have other, other medical needs. In many cases, the medical need will be a disability. For, for example, we do regularly have people that need somewhere with level access because they have difficulty managing stairs and things like that. So the, the other important thing to note that the committee will be aware of is because of the, the way that the allocation scheme works, it's a choice based scheme and it allows people applying for housing to choose when they want to bid for properties. So effectively, they, they can choose just to bid on properties in a particular area and to to wait in their accommodation around the moment. So the, the figures that we get, they don't give a measure of the absolute time that it's necessary for somebody to wait to reha, to be rehoused. The, the timing includes that element of personal choice.
So I just want to come in here and just kind of just say something about this point. I, I get what Lee's saying here. But I think potentially like a better measure might be just to focus on people who are in the part seven category on the housing register because they effectively have far less choice. So effectively, what Lee's saying is that, you know, people part six, they, they can kind of pick and choose when they bid. And that may be an element in this kind of delay. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's probably the case. But I think it might be for us to kind of ask further questions around part seven where, as I say, we know, you know, we, we know people, you know, have to bid or, you know, they, they lose their right to choose at all. So that might kind of give us a bit more accurate indicator of of how much difference there is in waiting times.
If we sort of look at the chart at five point ten, this was just showing the, the comparison for one, two, three, and then four bedroom or more properties and the average amount of time that somebody waited once they've been accepted onto the housing register. And that does show that for the one, two and three bedroom properties, people do wait a little longer if they have a medical need. For the people acquiring four bedroom properties or larger, it was slightly less. And that is likely to, to be to do with the level of priority that that they get. So if people have a medical need and another housing need, for example, they're overcrowded, then they will have a higher priority than somebody that is just overcrowded. So so that potentially explains that situation.
So this is where I'm going to go outside of my kind of area of law understanding a little bit. But I think within the Equality Act, the councils essentially have to ask, you know, can they, can they, have, have they taken every reasonable step to kind of, to address any change, you know, differences in people's experience of accessing services? So obviously, the council has, you know, has kind of given additional preference, if that's the right term, for people with medical needs. The question for us is going to be, well, you know, has that been enough to eradicate the difference? So if people are having to wait one or two months longer than people without disabilities, then, then it would seem that they need to go further in terms of, you know, applying that medical banding or, you know, finding some other way of, of ensuring that people don't have to wait longer. And, and it would be lawful, as far as I understand it, to actually ensure that people with disabilities have to wait less time than people without. So that's, that's kind of a, a place where discrimination would be legal. Again, these are kind of questions for us to kind of think about between meetings and potentially ask some more stuff later on.
I think as well, while people are in T A, when they need occupational therapy to go out and make adaptations to properties, they're not willing to do that in temporary accommodation. So potentially, you've got people living with requirements that aren't being met. Also, when you're looking for adapted properties for permanent accommodation, it may be worth asking the council if they would consider letting properties that aren't already adapted, giving time for them to maybe have the adaptations made, rather than making these peoples that await for an adapted property already available for them to move into.
Need to take some notes here because I think that this is probably a, a, particularly if we've got experience of, of seeing people in those kind of situations where you've kind of got a practice where if, you know, if OTs are saying that, well, we're not going to make adaptations because this person won't be in temporary accommodation for very long, then that seems to be, to be something that may not be lawful. So I think, almost want to kind of write a list of, of things kind of coming out of this meeting to, to put into the next one. But I think that would be something which would be, yeah, quite important, quite an easy point to make to the council if, if, if people effectively in T A with disabilities are not able to have those adaptations made at the time.
And just at five, five point one, to just make the point of the just under seventeen hundred households that are currently active on the housing register. There's four hundred and twelve people that have a medical need. But there is quite a high proportion of those that aren't actively bidding for properties at the moment. And we, we do periodically contact people that haven't been bidding for a period of time to check if they want to remain on the housing register or or not. But we haven't actually done that recently, particularly during the pandemic. It's a, a, a piece of housekeeping activity we need to, to pick up.
I think what, what Lee's basically saying there, the four hundred people odd that are on the housing register that are considered disabled or have a medical need, a large proportion of them not bidding. Well, the reason probably why they're not bidding on properties is because of the properties that are advertised are not suitable or not applicable to their medical or disabilities, medical needs or disabilities. So if you've got six properties advertised and then, you know, you've got a single person who needs wheelchair access and them single properties that have been advertised are all second floor or no wheelchair access, they're not going to bid. You know, why would they bid on? I think what the, the council need to do is when they're advertising these properties is also advertise that these properties do have wheelchair access or when advertising, these properties can be easily adapted.
I think it should be possible for us to get hold of figures around how many accessible properties are actually coming online. Because I think you're absolutely right, you know, if, if there's, if there aren't enough properties which, which are wheelchair accessible, for example, coming on, then obviously, you know, people aren't bidding for them. But that's not a choice. That's because there isn't anything to bid on that's suitable. So I, I, again, I think this is probably like another question we need to work out how we get answers. I think it's, we might fall foul of the time limits on F O Ys for that one because I'd imagine because they, Bedford doesn't have its own stock, it's going to have to contact all the separate providers or find some way of, of kind of, you know, getting stats on how many properties are coming available that are suitable. But again, I think it's something we need to follow up with. It's just a question of how we word that.
Does demonstrate that people may be very choosy and waiting for the right property to come along. I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions?
I was quite pleased with sort of his answer about, you know, it's not a perfect system and acknowledge, I thought he did a good job of holding his hands up and going, we've not chased people either. We've not seen why they're not bidding. Because like John, if they're not bidding because nothing suitable is coming up and they're not aware of that because they've not chased it, then that's, you know, that's something that they need to focus on. But that right there seems to me like just classic victim blaming almost, like, oh, people are being choosy. Like they're picking and choosing and adding in this element of just blame on the person that's trying to get accessible housing or, you know, actually suitable housing, that they're being seen as being picky for accessing their right, because it's already difficult to get on the housing register. So if you've made it through all those hurdles and you're clearly then entitled and they're following the same choice based programme, the allocation schemes that the council have implemented, I think it's a little unfair to sort of use that tone when we're talking about people and their choice, which is ultimately a good thing.
What I've learnt so far is that this is a public meeting, so they're kind, you know, there's all sorts of political dynamics going on, although it kind of seems quite dry. There's so much going on. I think what seems to be the case is when, you know, when you have an issue like this, what, what happens behind the scenes is that they go and they kind of, you know, work out what, what needs to be improved and how they might be able to do it. And, and you know, one sense, again, this might, might seem like a criticism, but the councillors on the housing committee don't appear to me to be very inquisitive publicly. So councillor Moon is probably the one who asks most questions in the meetings I've seen. But, you know, so but whether this stuff, as I say, it's all politics. So whether, you know, what goes on behind the scenes is kind of obviously not, not accessible to us. But I think, you know, again, these kind of, these issues that are kind of, that are being said are actually probably being picked up on. So, yeah, but, you know, I mean, I, yeah, I agree, Shannon. And I think everyone who speaks publicly in this meeting is in a difficult position to have to navigate. So.
Well, that I can see anybody indicating. If I've missed you, who do you want to speak? Please do so.
Obviously, it's waving furiously at you.
All right. Okay, no, I can't see her. Thank you.
Lee, you know, what is the, I know that we said, look, it takes longer time, but do you have, like, people are speaking to me and talking to me. We're waiting and we're actively bidding for three years, four years. And there is a, is there any particular time, like one year, if somebody is like waiting for one year or two year or three year, they go priority because they've been on, uh, waiting on, um, housing register for longer. Uh, because a couple of residents, they were saying that we are in the housing register for three years or four years and we haven't made success and we are actively bidding. And the person next door is start the bidding after her. They have less year than they have good situation. It could be different. I, I didn't ask more detail, but they get the house quicker than us. So I don't know what's happening. So complain like this. There's any, you know, time scales, you know, that they.
So how, how the scheme works is that, first of all, people are given a, a priority band. So we, we have a band A for emergencies, which people wouldn't be allocated that very often. That's really when, you know, somebody absolutely needs to move almost immediately for some reason. The, the, so generally, the highest priority band would be A and there's A, B, C and D. So when somebody applies, we would look at all their circumstances and based on the criteria in the allocation scheme, that determines which band they, they go into. If two people in the same band both bid for the property, then priority is given to the person that's been on the housing register to wait in the longest. So, so it is possible that, for example, so if somebody was in bands B and had been in that band for a couple of years, that their neighbour, um, has applied more recently, but is in band A. If they both bid for the same property, then it does mean that the neighbour in band A is going to, to get priority. And, and in terms of the housing need, I was just explaining, if there's more than one housing need, then that gives somebody a higher priority. So the example being, i- if somebody is just overcrowded, so they're lacking a bedroom, they wouldn't go into band C. If they meet another criteria as well, so, and there is some kind of medical need that means the current property isn't suitable for medical reasons. And because they, they've got two priorities, that would move them up into band B. So there, there isn't a set period of time. And then add on to that how frequently people have been in, which area they're bidding on, what size property they need. It, it's not possible to say that, you know, somebody should be waiting no more than X amount of time before they get rehoused, unfortunately.
So I think you just to reiterate something I said before, I think, I think the question for the council at this point is, is the current housing allocation policy enough to eradicate that difference? And, you know, I think obviously I don't think it is, but I think that's the question they need to be grappling with.
All right, thank you.
Moving on then to item, the, the next item, which is item number six, which is temporary accommodation. And again, Lee.
Thank you, Colleen. So the, the committee requested a report providing some information on the pressures on accommodation around temporary accommodation and how that might compare to other similar authorities. And also the, the financial impact. It's, it's quite a complex area and I've, I've, I've tried in the report to provide as much information as possible. We've done some comparisons using the nearest neighbour local authorities that I suspect that members of the committee are familiar with from, from other reports and other, other areas. So we have also included in there, Luton has been a geographical neighbour. Central Beds and Milton Keynes are already in the statistical neighbours. And what I've done, it's, it's probably easiest to see on, on the charts. So on page seven, there's charts showing the, the number of households in temporary accommodation in, in each of the. in, in each of the comparative authorities. So just to explain that the, the government collects data from all housing authorities and publishes it on a quarterly basis. So this was the information as at thirty first of March, which shows the temporary accommodation numbers. As you can see that it, the borough is, at that point was quite high in comparison to some of the other authorities. But it does seem to be the authorities in the, the east and southeast region at the highest with, with Luton and Milton Keynes, sort of considerably higher than, than everybody else. In terms of, you know, what the factors are here, there could be a variety of, of reasons. You know, property prices in comparison to, to income and how affordable they are could, could well be a factor. Whether the local authority has its own housing stock, which perhaps gives, you know, more options and, and more control over the actual accommodation. Although having said that, it is worth noting that Luton does have its own housing stock, but it does have significant people in temporary accommodation as well. So there is no one obvious factor that, that could pinpoint that.
Uh, fine, what Lee's doing here is, is, this is where it gets really interesting. So the, there's, what, what he's trying to do is trying to find sort of like-for-like local authorities to compare, you know, how, how much temporary accommodation stock has been, has been dished out, basically. The, the problem with Bedford is that it's, obviously, you know, he's, he's, he's mentioned Luton and Milton Keynes there. Luton and Milton Keynes are both outliers around temporary accommodation stock. If you look at the figures he's, he's, he's alluding to in terms of the, you know, the government key performance indicators, which is really interesting if you want to have a look, it's all online. Milton Keynes and Luton both have very, very large numbers of people in temporary accommodation compared to other authorities. And, and Luton's been like that for a long time. Milton Keynes is very interesting, their temporary accommodation stock has actually increased more than Bedford's in the same sort of timescale. So there, whereas Bedford's temporary accommodation stock has gone up by about eightfold in the last five or so years. Milton Keynes has gone up even more than that, and I don't quite know why that is. I know that Milton Keynes tends to house people out of their area as well. So we get some people in Bedford who've been placed by Milton Keynes and probably vice versa as well. So people in Milton Keynes placed by Bedford. But ultimately, this is, you know, th- this kind of conversation is very interesting because what, what Lee's saying is, is correct. What he doesn't mention at any point is that it also comes down to individual local authority political outlooks and decision-making. So, you know, one sense, TA stock in Bedford's gone up eightfold in the last five or so years. You know, that's not because homelessness has gone up eightfold in the last five or so years. That's because Bedford Borough Council's made the decision to increase its resources to, to deal with the problem. You know, and that seems to be something that they're not really willing to say out loud. Gatekeeping is a national issue, LJO's done reports on it. That's kind of what affects these numbers. And local authorities have this huge internal tension. If they follow the law, as, you know, as, as Bedford is saying, as they, if they follow the law more, they'll get more people migrating towards Bedford. And politically, that's difficult for a number of different reasons, some of them very good reasons. So that's really kind of some of the background that kind of helps make sense of what he's saying. And, and obviously, you know, proximity to London is, is, is relevant, but it's not the only defining factor. Luton is very interesting because it's a port city, obviously, and also it's cheaper than the surrounding area. So, and also London tends to place a lot of people there in temporary accommodation itself. So there's all sorts of pressures which are unusual about Luton, which means it's probably not a very good comparator. And so I don't know what would be a good comparator, but I think, I think it's, it's, it's difficult to do what Lee's going to, you know, attempting to do here.
I've tended it also, um, look at a comparison to regions and, and the country as a whole across England. Unsurprisingly, London is particularly unusual compared to other authorities. But, but what it does show is that in Bedford, we are in a sort of almost double the east of England average when you look at the temporary accommodation compared to the number of households. I've also at five fifteen on page ten, also lots of comparison because the data that the government published shows the composition of the households. So that would be interesting to look at the proportion of single households, which would tend to be people with more complex needs compared to families.
And again, just a point of what he's saying here, the, the, so the number of single households in a local authority's temporary accommodation is interesting because you're likely then to be dealing with people who are not automatically in priority need. They're going to more likely be in priority need through vulnerability, which is the easiest category of people to gatekeep. And obviously you do have people who are going to be single, who are in priority need because of domestic abuse. But that also probably is a very good indicator of the council's overall outlook towards gatekeeping. So as I say, single people are most easy to gatekeep. If you had a local authority which had hardly any single homeless people, that'd be a very good indication that they're gatekeeping a lot. Whereas Bedford, I don't know if he gives the exact figures here, but there's a few hundred single homeless people in temporary accommodation in Bedford, which, again, I think is, is part of, part of why the rough sleeping figures have remained low, whereas other local authorities have bounced back up. Um, but it's also because, you know, decision-making among frontline, among frontline offices is far better than many councils. It's not perfect, but it's far better. So again, there's a lot of interesting stuff going on here.
And interestingly, you know, Bedford is quite high and we, the committee will know from previous reports that we have seen a lot of single homelessness throughout the pandemic and on a ongoing basis. But there are also a number of other authorities that have got similar levels of, of single homelessness. So, so again, there's no one obvious picture around that. At five seventeen, I, I put a chart in which is just comparing single homelessness and, and the number of people reported on the annual rough sleeper count to see if there's any correlation there. Again, it's not, but there's no very obvious correlation. I think one point I'd make in terms of the council's continued and everyone in approach to try to avoid not providing temporary accommodation wherever possible. And in terms of, I would expect that the number of the authorities that show relatively high number of rough sleepers are those authorities that haven't maintained everyone in approach.
Well, I think he's saying here is absolutely bang on. Um, I did a lot of kind of looking into the stats and the local authorities that have that increase in single homeless households in temporary accommodation are also the ones which tend to have lower, you know, they don't have that bounce back after everyone of the number of people rough sleeping. And which is something which Bedford, interestingly, doesn't actually kind of blow its own trumpet about as much as I think it should do. Because obviously it's put, put a lot of money into the rough sleeper initiative or, or has got a lot of money from central government for the rough sleeper initiative. And that's partly why rough sleeper numbers have gone down. But it's also because there's a couple of hundred single homeless people in temporary accommodation today. That's the, you know, and that many of those people are those who have been rough sleeping before and they're at risk of rough sleeping again. So that's again, that's part of the, you know, a big part of the picture. Credit is due to, to the council and I, I don't, I don't know why they don't say that more widely.
Perhaps a touch on, on where we are with everyone in. So the, the figures in the report refer to people that are in, what of a better word, mainstream temporary accommodation. So it doesn't include people that are accommodated because they would be rough sleeping. And we still have thirty four people at the McKeer Hotel at the moment that aren't included in these figures. So the people that go into mainstream accommodation are those people that when they contact us as being homeless, they, we do an assessment and based on that assessment, they've got statutory entitlement to temporary accommodation. So they will be clustered in priority need accommodation, which means they either have children, are vulnerable in some respects, or have one of the automatic eligibility criterias. So for example, they're homeless due to domestic abuse. That doesn't necessarily mean that people are going to continue to have a statutory right to temporary accommodation indefinitely. So some people, all those people will qualify for fifty six days during a relief period. After the fifty six days, in some circumstances, the council could choose to end the accommodation duty.
So this is where we're going to start disagreeing with the council on this one. So this, this relates back to a question, whether, yeah, a question that John asked a year ago, pretty much, like, I think, well, maybe like in February, maybe, where he was basically saying, you know, people are, are approaching the council who are probably or may be in priority need and they've been told to rough sleep for a night and then be picked up by the rough sleeper team. This is, as I say, where we're probably going to, you know, cause some issues with what the council's saying. You know, you're not going to tell me that out of those thirty four individuals in, in the McKeer that no one meets the section one eight eight threshold of being, having reason to believe they might be in priority need. You know, it just for me, it'd be, it would be, you know, al- almost impossible to, to have that. I'm sure there may be people in there who, who, who aren't owed a statutory duty. But this is where I think the council have, have kind of painted themselves into a bit of a corner with this by saying that everyone in the McKeer isn't owed a statutory duty. I mean, there's many benefits of being in the McKeer over, over temporary accommodation. I had a guy during Covid who basically would prefer to sleep in the McKeer than go into temporary accommodation because they were getting meals at the time and support and stuff like that. But ultimately, this is where I think, yeah, this is where I, I think there are issues in terms of the, you know, the background of, of kind of what's going on here.
The thirty four people that are in the McKeer Hotel, and just for those that are listening, they're, they're in the McKeer Hotel as an extension of the everyone in scheme that the government implemented during Covid. That's now ended, but Bedford Borough Council have, have extended it. Um, so you've still got thirty four people in there. They, they, they say it's a rolling amount of, of people, but they're still leaving and coming in, but the figure is thirty four.
Lee's just said it there, Lee's just used the word choice there. That they have the choice to end after fifty six days, not necessarily, you know, they have powers to do far much more. Have all of those people had an official homelessness application gone in? And have they had an official assessment? Or are we assuming that they've got no recourse? Are we assuming that they're not eligible?
But don't doubt that during the everyone in scheme, when it was officially active, you know, during Covid, that there were people in there that shouldn't have been in there. They should, they should have been in, they should have had the section one eight eight duty owed to them and they should have been temporarily housed in the traditional way. I'm not doubting that at all. During, during the whole process, the, the, the one year, one and a half years, two years that this scheme was live, yeah, there were people that were getting, that weren't getting treated according to the law and should have been, you know, treated under part seven and weren't being.
So I'm, I'm, I'm aware of a guy who, it was back in February, he's, he's got recourse and, and he was, yeah, he kind of got given that treatment or, you know, he was someone who the council had already found to be in priority need before and he was told to go and rough sleep and there was some issues around picking him up and stuff like that. So, but yeah, I mean, the other thing that was interesting with the report is that at one point, the McKeer was included in the figures of temporary accommodation. But I don't know if that was like a misprint, but somewhere in there it talks about, you know, kind of the bed spaces are. And, and I think Rogers Court as well are specifically called temporary accommodations. Because my understanding is that neither Rogers Court nor McKeer is, is what we would call temporary accommodation. It's not entering or, or kind of, you know, section one eight eight accommodation, basically.
Similarly, there will be situations where people in a seriously breach the terms of the, of the licence to occupy the property. So, you know, very serious antisocial behaviour, crime and things like that, where again, it would be reasonable for the council to end the accommodation. At the moment, throughout the pandemic and on a long going basis, we are doing our utmost to avoid having to end accommodation for people. Um, there, there.
That, that there is something which, again, I think the council should be applauded for in terms of, you know, many, many councils, as soon as they have a bit of, you know, antisocial behaviour or something that's seen as antisocial behaviour, irrespective of whether that person might have, you know, disabilities that are affecting their behaviour or, or whatever. Many councils would just, just get rid of people at the first opportunity, which again, is why you see this bounce back in some council areas of, of rough sleeping numbers going back up again. The fact that Bedford do, you know, they, they bend over backwards for many people just to make sure that, you know, someone gets evicted from one TA placement, they'll, they'll try and find another one. So again, there's lots to applaud here. Um, as I say, that, I don't know how widespread that kind of response around the country is. Um, obviously, my view is that that saves the council money in the long term because they don't then have people who end up kind of costing other services, you know, far more because they're rough sleeping or because they're, because they're not safely housed.
There are unfortunately occasions where, you know, behaviour is that extreme that, that that's not possible because accommodation providers won't accept them. But generally, we are, are maintaining that.
I agree with Lee, it, it's, it's an area that a lot of it's out of the council's control because they use private providers for a lot of the temporary accommodation. And as soon as these private providers get a sniff of any antisocial behaviour, they not only just evict the tenant, the temporary tenant, but they also pull their accommodation away from the council. And I've just had information today to say that, um, the council just recently lost forty one properties um, due to single homeless people causing antisocial behaviour. It's good that Lee's saying, you know, you don't blanket approach them and once they commit antisocial behaviour, they're out on their arse and we do try to re-accommodate them. But if you've got private landlords pulling their accommodation because of that aspect, then the, the council will find it difficult to not only re-accommodate these people, but accommodate people, fresh, fresh applicants.
It leads into kind of, I guess, a different conversation about temporary accommodation that the council's procuring, where they're, they're getting, getting big blocks of flats and stuff like that.
The impact on budgets, I've just explained from sort of five eighteen onwards how that works. And I, I know that has been covered in previous reports, but we're entitled to charge a rent for temporary accommodation. The vast majority of people tend to be entitled to support through benefits. And with temporary accommodation, it's housing benefits, so we recover housing benefits to cover the rent. However, for most of the property that we're renting in, there is a significant difference between the amount we have to pay for the accommodation and the amount of rent that, that we can recover, which creates a budget pressure for the council. It, it is an area of concern and there is a, a lot of activity going on at the moment to, to try to reduce the, the, both the number of people in temporary accommodation, which is obviously a good thing to do anyway, but also to, to try and bring down that, that financial cost.
So something that was kind of said by a number of people at the council during the, during Covid, during that kind of initial period of everyone in was that they kind of made the point that, so technically speaking, if you, if you, if you're more vulnerable, you should be ending up in section one eight temporary accommodation. And if you're less vulnerable, you end up in the McKeer where you have support on site and you have kind of, you know, that additional resource put in there. And I think, you know, in terms of the homes and strategy coming up, a big kind of question that needs to be filled is, how does the council, you know, how can partners in the area kind of help the council out with getting that support to, to individuals in, in section one eight accommodation? I mean, part of it is having suitable temporary accommodations and not having blocks of flats that are kind of going to attract, you know, kind of antisocial behaviour. But also, you know, what can other services be doing to, to increase that support that's available for people? So that you're not having, you know, as John kind of just said about, you know, situations where behaviour becomes untenable for private landlords. So it's very complicated and I think, but there are some real opportunities with that, you know, again. And I think that takes, that pushes, you know, gets people away from the supported housing model, which, you know, let's face it, again, with the first hint of antisocial behaviour, often people get evicted and then they're then intentionally homeless or can be.
And that, that activity is focusing on improving prevention. So trying to make sure that we, where people contact us and they're not yet homeless, that we, we put resources into place to make sure that those people can be seen immediately by an officer. They will normally get an appointment, it could be the same day or at most within five days if they're not at immediate risk of homelessness. The officers will then go through the personal housing plan. Uh, they will look at what action they may be able to take to prevent homelessness. So maybe contacting the landlord, negotiating on the person's behalf, looking at what other housing options they have. Uh, and the other area of activity that we're focusing on is the, the move on. So where people are in temporary accommodation to focus on trying to make sure that we can source accommodation for those people, whether that's through the housing register. In many cases, it's supported housing because people do need some support to maintain the tenancies and private sector. Although, um, again, as a committee, be aware from previous reports, the private sector is, is very challenging because of the, the costs compared to, you know, levels of income and the amount of universal credit that somebody can get to, to assist them with cost of renting.
I wasn't going to jump in, but it sat with me and bugged me. The, the same way that the council don't sort of recognise a disability when you join the housing register, I don't believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if it has any questions about whether you can manage a tenancy or what that even includes. So I don't know how he can sort of make the assumption that people in temporary accommodation need supported accommodation because they can't manage a tenancy. And that might be the case for a handful of people, but I don't see where he's getting, he's put so much work into all of this research and then that one sentence really frustratingly, because I'm team Lee here, like that one sentence sort of cracks it all for me because it's ridiculous. And then it's also supported accommodation. What programmes are they giving people that help them with managing a tenancy? Because I'm not aware of any sort of supported accommodation locally that gives you a shiny certificate at the end to present to your new landlord that says you're now capable of managing a tenancy. So in which case, I think either people are capable of managing a tenancy or the supported accommodation is failing because they're not showing people how to manage a tenancy and they don't get a shiny certificate. So either way, I'm not very pleased with that sentence personally.
I mean, this, this is like the, yeah, this is the big picture of the sector. So, you know, charities, you know, and myself included, have, you know, we've kind of, we've talked to how, how important the supported housing model is and how people can't possibly survive. And it's, and, and, you know, that, that's not the reality, but, you know, I, I think that's not a message that's very popular. And I think, yeah, charities are still kind of, you know, to exist, they have to kind of make the point, you know, they have to make their case to exist in the first place. And so by, by painting homeless people as being, you know, people with drug and alcohol issues and mental health issues that can't possibly cope without someone, then it, it, it serves their own purposes by doing that. I mean, I have heard that Bedford Borough Council are seriously looking into a housing first pilot or, you know, call it pilot, we know it works, it's been going for forty five years. But, um, that's, I think there is some movement there, but I think, yeah, I, I think you're right to, to say it, Shannon. Because I think many of these councillors, again, will kind of accept that, oh, you know, homeless people can't cope on their own.
What I'd really appreciate is because that sentence is so broad. But say if Lee said, actually, there's a lot of people struggling to set up their council tax bill because the system is complicated or it's online and people don't have the online resources, then that's brilliant because then you can have a tangible outcome and a, a solution to that. So then that enables someone to manage their tenancy. Or if it's a case of people can't fund new carpets, you know, there's, if, if that's the sort of thing he's talking about, fair play. But currently, it's just a really broad negative sentence.
That's right. Well, so that reminded, so the, so when we did that work around the housing allocation policy, and I think, was it like we got, we asked for sixteen things and I think we've got fifteen of them? Um, or, you know, fifteen of them came into, came into existence. The one thing we didn't get was the wording around the housing allocation policy, where it said basically if someone has, has previously got rent arrears, then they need to do like a rent, a, a, a kind of a budgeting course or something like that. And my, the point I made that was that, you know, you're assuming that. And my, the point I made that was that, you know, you're assuming that people who are in rent arrears necessarily can't budget. When the fact is if they haven't got enough money to cover the rent, then it's not a budgeting issue, it's an income issue. That's again, the language that's used around homelessness, you know, if someone's got rent arrears, oh, well, you, you must not be able to manage your money properly. When actually they can probably manage their money far better than most other people can because they have to, they have to kind of get by. So, but again, I think we're, we're fighting up your struggle with this message of actually the majority of people who, who become homeless are perfectly able to manage a safe, secure tenancy, you know, but if you stick them in, you know, a rogue land order, if you stick them in a rubbish supportive accommodation project, they, they're going to struggle as anyone would do. So, yeah, I think, I think you're right to say it.
If you're gonna, you know, nominate people to go into supported accommodation, the council need to take some responsibility to look into what that accommodation is providing as support. Because if they're saying, oh yeah, we're going to support this person, how are they supporting them? What are they doing? Are they giving them life skills that are going to help them manage a tenancy? You know, how are the council monitoring this? It all needs looking into if they're gonna start using that as a, as a reputable sort of place to put these people.
So on, on that point, so the council's made itself a bit of a rod for its own back because certainly early on in the pandemic, they used what, as far as I know, unregistered hostels, you know, they might not be technically true, but that they used hostel providers or supportive accommodation providers which were not registered. And, you know, as, as we've heard reports of how bad those projects can be and it's a national issue and again, it's going to hit the news this year. But the other thing, thing with that is that the way the, the housing benefit works for that is that the council ends up having to pay, have to having to top up the rent effectively. Whereas someone which is like a registered, so supportive accommodation provider gets reimbursed by central government. For these kind of, these, these like Wild West type supportive accommodation providers, the council has to pay, has to kind of pay towards that. So it's another cost which, which, yeah, I think, again, I think this is something the council's aware of. But they're in a tricky position where they, they kind of have to resort or they feel they have to resort to those kind of, kind of options in the short term, even though it ends up kind of biting them in the long term.
Is the, um, purchasing temporary accommodation. So the, the, uh, capital allocation is the target to, um, deliver a hundred and twenty properties in, in total, plus the units at Rogers Court. And at the moment, we have St Cuthbert Street, St Peter Street and Rogers Court are, are all occupied. And we've got fourteen new units on.
Yeah, this is what I mean about then kind of counting Rogers Court as temporary accommodation. I don't know how that works. I, I thought the Rogers Court were tenancies, but I might be totally wrong about that. So, yeah, it wasn't the Mercure, it was Rogers Court that they're incorporating into this temporary accommodation thing, but I don't know. Again, it might be helpful just to find out how that works. It's not, I mean, it's not a significant, I guess. But certainly Rogers Court is, is where people who, who have identified kind of complex needs or whatever are kind of placed in. As far as I know, they have a tenancy, but again, I might be wrong about it.
Tavish Stock Street, which includes some family size accommodation that we're just, the, the property's been purchased. Then our building services team are just doing some works at the moment. They're, they're improving fire detection, equipment, et cetera, to make sure that the building's as safe as possible. And we, we expect to be able to move people in there very shortly. And if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Any comments? Uh, sorry, I can't see. Yes, carry on.
I stuck my hand up. Lee, I was surprised to see that we are still continuing maintaining everyone in approach. I assume you mean in respect to those whom we have no statutory duty. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, yeah.
How many of those of the, how many of the thirty four, oh, do we have no statutory duty in respect of? You mentioned thirty four in the Mercure.
Um, so that all thirty four, we wouldn't have a statutory duty to provide accommodation.
It's thirty four. How mu- how much, what's the cost per day per person?
Um, the, so, um, the net cost for the rooms is, I think about sixty eight pounds per room. Um, but then we would recover, I think the housing benefit element is about fifteen pounds per night.
So net, net cost of fifty.
Around that. Approximately fifty.
So that's about twenty thousand per year per person.
And, um.
It's about six hundred thousand, okay, calculated to be about six hundred thousand per year for the, for the law.
Some of that cost is offset.
Let me finish please.
Oh, sorry, I apologise.
Is that, is that correct? The, 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 the cost in round numbers is around six hundred thousand a year for those for whom we have no statutory duty.
It, yeah, would be around about that amount.
Can you say when that decision was taken or can you tell me where the, where that expenditure was authorised?
So the, the expenditure's been met from, there, there is a budget for, um, the current year. Part of it is grant funded. So, um, for example, we, we've got funding through the RSI grant, et cetera.
How much of, how, how much of that, Lee, goes to the, those for whom we have no statutory duty?
So.
How many, how much grant aiding goes to those?
I couldn't give you the figures, um, from the top of my head. I would need to go away and, and, and look at that.
So I answer, I know, of course we have a budget for the overall area. But are you telling me that we have agreed a budget specifically with those for whom we have no statutory duty in mind?
The, the, there was a budget around the accommodation for people that would be at, at risk of rough sleeping. That's, that's correct. Uh, but.
But because we were getting a government grant for these people. Quite reasonably, proper, properly, because it was, it was a legitimate thing at the time. Since.
This is probably awkward. I've cr- I'm cringing here a little bit, but so, but the question I've got, I don't understand here is that, so they're, they're talking about claiming housing benefits still though. So I, 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 I guess, um, I don't understand why housing benefits be mentioned there if these are people who don't have recourse to public funds. I mean, I don't know if, if there's gonna, they're gonna provide more information to answer councillor Moon's questions in, in future. I don't know.
I feel like Lee was under a lot of pressure here to sort of answer this. So either he's panicked and just said about the housing benefit and actually people aren't eligible or they, they are eligible for benefits or housing benefits, in which case I would highly believe that they are also eligible for statutory assistance. Um, I think Lee was just put under a bit of pressure.
But I think the, the general question that councillor Moon is asking here, and this is what I think he's a bit pissed off about, is that regardless of the amount of money, you know, fifteen pounds is offset, you know, by housing benefit and some of it's paid for by rough sleeping initiative grant funding. There will be a certain amount of, of money that's allocated to the, these people staying there. That is, let's call it public money. And I think what he's trying to get to at the bottom of this is who made that decision to then spend public money on, on the people staying in the Mercure. And I think that's what he's a bit miffed about because who has the authority to do that? I think that's where, because it's a Lib Dem run council and he's a conservative. I, I think he's probably alluding to the fact that, you know, it should be, the decision should be made across the board. It should be an all party decision or something like that. I'm not sure. I know that he's very miffed about the fact that a decision has been made to spend money. And he probably feels that he should have been part of that decision making process.
I mean, can you imagine how miffed he's gonna be when he finds out that they're also paying for all of the support services that, you know, um, other charities are sort of putting into it?
It'd be, it'd be interesting to know what the kind of the law is on, on council decision making and like, you know, whether there's a threshold of like, you know, spends over a certain amount of money is going to need to require a whole housing committee to agree on it. Uh, this, yeah, I mean, um, who knows? I think it'd be interesting to see the next one, see the next committee meeting, see if this stuff is, is kind of taken forward. It'd be worth us just kind of paying attention to the agenda, the next agenda to see if any of these questions roll over into it and whether the kind of, whether, whether there's like more detail on how this all works.
The government grant is finished. Have we taken a decision as to whether or not, at any level, as to whether or not this, the, this scheme should be continued?
Well, I say the, the, the accommodation is being funded through a specific budget that is in the approved budget. Um, and in terms of the specifics with the grants, et cetera, I, you know, I'd need to take that away and, and have a look at that. I couldn't give you that information. So here and now.
It was interesting that this was like one of the stories that was in the, the Bedford Independent or one of the local papers. It was interesting to see the, the public response. So there was, I mean, the comments I saw were attacking councillor Moon for, for raising it. But I don't know if that's probably because of wider political play, you know, kind of stuff that's going on at the moment. Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting how this might land. I, I think they're gonna need to give more detail to actually confirm what the situation is.
I think because on the face of it, it, it probably comes across that, you know, he, councillor Moon is, you know, whether he's saying this or not, he, he, he's basically saying, you know, if, if we're funding thirty four people in the Mercure that we shouldn't funding, then they shouldn't be in there. And if that means return to the streets, then so be it. I think that's how it's coming across, being devil's advocate. That, um, he's saying, his main gripe is, you know, who's, you know, where's this money coming from and who's agreed that we should, should be spending it in this way? So I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here because, I mean, there is another councillor that's gonna give his ten pound of worth now and say, clearly it's a humane thing to do by not letting them return to the street and we all agree on that. But it's about the, the, the spending of the money and, and who agreed upon it.
And do you have any idea about how long, um, the, these qualifying individuals have been in, in residence?
On this. Uh, I mean, again, I, I haven't got the information in front of me. I do know that there is a regular turnover. So it's, um, it's not a case of the same people have been in the hotel all the time. There, there has been a turnover of people on a regular basis.
So this is not just a question, if I can finish, this, this last question. So it's not just a question of, of continuing those for whom we already brought in under the scheme, which is sort of understandable. Why are you taking in new people for whom there is no statutory duty?
It's, so, yeah, where people would be at risk of, um, rough sleeping.
Lee shot himself in the foot there by saying it's sort of a rolling stock that people, and people are still accessing the Mercure, that they don't have a statutory duty. Again, on the humane side of it, yeah, that's, that's, that's all singing and dancing. But at the end of the day, they're still accommodating people with no statutory duty, when perhaps from councillor Moon's point of view, they shouldn't be.
I'm sort of not trying to read too much into like body language and tone and stuff, but I felt like Lee just then was like, well, yeah, we're housing people who are at risk of rough sleeping, as in like, you know, that's not. I think in previous meetings, Lee's gotten, and the council as a whole have gotten so much praise for everyone in. And I think councillor Atkins will always say at every meeting, everyone in is brilliant and almost to the point where it's annoying and it's sort of takes away from actually what's happening. And now it's interesting to see this whole dynamic where there's a shift in someone coming out and saying, is this actually a good thing?
That, that's, yeah, that's correct.
I have a comment, Chair.
Okay, just any other questions? Okay, Stephen, your comment.
Just given Lee has agreed that the, the net cost in round numbers is around six hundred thousand, that's my quick arithmetic. That seems to me to be a lot of money for, for those for whom we have no statutory duty, given we do have statutory duties. We are not to put it hard, not to put it more strongly, not in a strong position financially.
So I, so I agree, I, I agree with what councillor Moon said there in terms of, and I guess this is something I've said for a long time, is that, you know, if, if council has a statutory duty, whether it's to the adult services, you know, children's services, housing, all that sort of stuff, then that has to be prioritised over, yeah, over, over other things, over having nice flower beds and libraries and stuff like that and swimming pools. I think, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know whether, whether the council kind of has anything on the savings they make, you know, by enabling people to have a safe roof over their head, the savings they then make. I mean, my guess would be that it does have a net saving, but it's, I, I agree with you, John. I get why councillor Moon's raising the question. I, I, I think it was interesting, as I say, how, how that was kind of, um, portrayed in the, in the media article about it as well.
I think basically, yeah, just, just to labour the point, um, he's saying, you know, that I think we, we should focus more on those that we do owe statutory duty to, rather than those that we don't.
Um, it seems to me this is a matter that should have been given some consideration and should have been subject to a decision. As I understand it, there has been no specific decision in this respect, which seems to me to be a gap.
Mad, mad, I, I'm not convinced that that's what Lee said, because he did say we had some grant funding. So your net budget, but councillor Headley may have some more detail.
Okay, Michael.
Thanks, yeah. So I did, I did have my hand up. Um, I think what we need to really remember the context of this. First of all, and it's referenced in this report, we, we had some of the highest levels of rough sleeping in the country. We need to remember where we started with this. This is people who've got no roof over their heads who are sleeping on the streets or, um, in makeshift, um, um, sort of, um, tents or whatever around about and, you know, it's through, through, through the summer, winter, all seasons, you know, that's, that's the situation we were in. That's the situation we were in before. People were sleeping in too high, far too high numbers on the, on the streets. And I don't, I don't, for one, I don't want to return to that. I don't want those people, um, who have got nowhere else to go, no recourse to any other uh, support or accommodation to basically go right your back on the streets.
I think we just need to recognise how cool it is that this is like the finance sort of portfolio holder from the council and he's like, and he's, that's his line. I think that's really cool. Uh, you know, I don't know how many councils around the country have, have, you know, um, influential politicians who are like, yeah, we actually, you know, we, we wanna, we don't want to go back to a situation where we've got loads of people on the street. So that's, that's cool.
That, that's what we're providing this service for. It's, uh, you know, we might have a statutory duty, but there's other things to consider beyond what is a, a legal necessity. And I think it's, it's important, it's about a really fundamental, um, part of, it shelters a fundamental need for people. And I think, um, now I, I, I don't disagree that there's, we need to continue to rev- review the situation, review, um, the, the best way, best accommodation. I know there's other, uh, we, you know, we're purchasing other accommodation. We've got purchased Rogers Courts, a very successful accommodation. We need to continue to do work like that to make sure, uh, we've got the best, um, and most of cost effective provision for people. But on the fundamental point, I do not want to return to the position where Bedford was one of the highest levels of people sleeping rough on the streets. That, that is not where I want to be.
And, Chair, I have my check.
The fact that he's sort of gone against who I certainly watching it viewed as a strong character in this meeting. And he's put his head above sort of the parapet. He sounded genuinely emotional just because that, that's a brave thing to do, I think. Whether we're all sat here in agreement that yes, people should have houses and people should have a roof over their heads. I think in that situation, it is a brave thing to do and it should be recognised.
But what I, what I, I believe as well though is councillor, councillor Headley, I don't think he quite grasps the consequences of his good natured intentions by saying, yes, you know, you, you know, we don't want to return to rough sleeping and people should be accommodated or have shelter in some shape or form. That will, and it's alluded to later on in the conversation, encourage homelessness tourism, tourism. And it will encourage people to come to Bedford, knowing that they will get a roof over their head in some shape or form.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that for me is the big, that's the big question for the council at the moment strategically. How do they, as I say, how do they, how do they exist amongst other councils who are gatekeeping and kind of keeping people out? Uh, I think that's, that's something, I mean, there's plenty that can be done, but I think that's something that they really, you know, need to get their heads around. I think my guess is that, that, you know, councillor Headley probably represents, you know, uh, much of the councillor's kind of views on it. Certainly the Lib Dem groups, you know, seem to be responsible for a lot of good decisions being made, um, that have kind of resulted in this, this reduction. Um, so, yeah, but this is, this, it's not quite Jackie Weaver, Shannon. When, when, when this happened, I got a text from Shannon saying it was George off him. But I think, uh, yeah, it's not quite Jackie Weaver, but it's, it's, it's the most interesting one I've seen.
Here, I have my hand up before.
Yeah, I, I can see that now.
Thank you. So absolutely agree with that. And I think we need to get the written answer from Lee to see the, the, the financial situation because there are grants, I believe. The stuff this flags up to me and it's some work that, uh, I've been doing, uh, in the early stage of chief executive, is how we do not get the thirty percent affordable houses that we need through the planning system and through this, uh, uh, the, the government's, a change in the viability. And we must tackle that because if you look at how much we've got just in the low twenties a, a percent, and you look at ten percent difference, so a hundred and thirty houses a year. If we had that, and I believe the numbers in temporary accommodation are higher than this now. If we had that over the last six or seven years, that extra hundred and thirty houses, we would have those affordable houses. We could put people from temporary into permanent accommodation, permanent settle, which is what, what we want around all this screen. And we could actually move people away uh, from having to do, actually be in hotel rooms, be nightly let's looked at in hotels or moving people, um, into temporary accommodation where they're not sure where they're going to be, they're not sure where their children are going to go to school. And so to longer term, we need to tackle this temporary accommodation. So that, sorry, the affordable houses and what we get. You know, we've done a needs assessment that says we need thirty percent. You know, and when planning committee has to decide between whether it's electric charging points or affordable houses or whether it's building houses or not building, we get four percent, as there was one in planning committee. That's not acceptable. We need thirty percent across the board. And we need to look at how others get that. And we need to actually be robust to making sure that developers deliver the thirty percent affordable that we approve we need by doing that assessment. And we need the government to support us in doing that. We're the fastest growing, um, authority in the fastest growing region. Um, not something we choose to do, but something the government said we need to do and we're delivering what the government said. But we must deliver that thirty percent affordable. And that would actually remove over a period of time, these issues we have with people in temporary accommodation, people in hotels. So I do think this committee should recommend that the executive looks at this and write a, a robust letter uh, to the new secretary of state to say, would he support us in delivering affordable homes for the people that so need it rather than bottlenecking people? So it's two bits temporary accommodation. One is the people go in, that continues to rise, there's no exit route. And if you've actually talked to anybody, uh, and then tried to get accommodation at the moment, trying to rent accommodation, they are going so quickly, people are renting before they see them because they don't get to see it. If you don't do that, you don't get accommodation. So hopefully we'll look at that and look at how we can actually um deliver the thirty percent of affordable houses we so desperately need.
Well, I just want to come in there because I think he's stating the blinding obvious. Affordable housing and the building of it and recruitment of it, et cetera, there's been an issue for decades. The fact that he's saying that we we, you know, we should now start acting on that because temporary accommodation and all, you know, all these issues are arising and we're having problems with. Acting upon it knee jerk now is not what's required. They should have been acting on it. They should be putting pressure on central government consistently, not as knee jerk to to an issue that's that's be becoming out of hand now. A robust letter to the new secretary of state, you know. Shouldn't they continuously be, you know, sending robust letters to the secretary of state requesting this additional assistance? It's just, he's he's not come up with anything tangible there. He's just saying, we ought to, we ought to do this, you know. Well, of course you do, that's your job to do that. He's put pressure on on those that have got the power to, you know, release this housing or get, make sure this housing is out there and available. He's offered nothing new there.
I agree, John, this should be the norm, but one of the reasons I was like jaw dropping, Mike, was A, because I was tired, but also because I've never seen in any of these council meetings, Mayor Dave say anything like this. And yeah, to us, it is blindingly obvious, like you say, John, but I can't help but feel it's not to them. And even if in the next meeting, they sort of backtrack slightly, like we have this. At some point, Mayor Dave has said, we need to focus on getting the thirty percent that we worked out. And, you know, he's he's quite passionate there, like, that's why I was gobsmacked, because I was like, who is this person? This is the person that we've been, that we should, like you said, John, we should have been seeing for the last however many years. Yeah, if it's if it's come from this knee jerk reaction, I just hope it continues and they actually do tangible stuff from this.
I mean, so my take on it is that this this isn't like knee jerk for him. I think, I mean, I I I'm totally encouraged that he's he, that my read on that is that he cares. And that's, you know, and I don't think that's, I I think he's cared for, you know, for some time, you know, and and known about the issue for some time. I mean, the the response of like writing a robust letter to the to the secretary of state reminds me of a Red Dwarf thing, whether it's like, you know, we'll do a really serious leaflet campaign. But but so on a serious point, I think, I think this is something where the organising side, I think, could come into it. So with Citizens UK and that kind of mood, you know, stuff, actually, we need to get a handle on what, how this system works in practice. So if you've got, you know, essentially the, you know, the the mayor, your elected mayor of Bedford, not not able to to kind of force developers into to, you know, to meet in their criteria and and building enough affordable homes, then we need to understand how that works and understand what the limits of, you know, what these politicians can do. But potentially it's something for me would be an organising action where we go and, you know, do something with a Bovis Homes or whoever. Um, and and actually kind of bring this into, bring this to light because, you know, the the fact of the matter is that they can kind of commit to building X percent of affordable homes and then they encounter an issue and they're like, oh, we can't do that anymore. And it appears to be that they just get away scot free. So I think there's like, you know, we 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 see things very similarly. Yeah. And I think that actually this might be an opportunity to work out how, okay, how do we actually go and put pressure on developers to actually to to deliver on this, you know? I mean, I I I'm not confident that the the central government's going to be the answer right now, but there might be things that can be done directly with developer, you know, developers, chief execs or whatever, who, you know, um can be very reasonable people, I'm sure. So I think I think there's a real opportunity here about what we um, yeah, what what, you know, what what we push for and what we can do, you know, in terms of citizens of Bedford or whatever. I, yeah, I I agree with you. And this is the most animated I've seen these guys, but I think it's, I think it's it's cool.
For our residents here in the borough. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, Steve, sorry, I was on mute. Thank you.
I don't disagree with a word of what the mayor says, as you as you well knows, I'm entirely with him on those issues and we do, we're happy to join him, make sure that our side signs the same, signs the same letter or sends a copy of the same letter. Um, and so I personally signed it. But can I draw your attention or the committee's attention to um the second paragraph on page four of the paper? An overly generous approach providing accommodation can increase demand by attracting people to the borough because they believe they are more likely to be provided with accommodation. The issue is not about overall accommodation, the overall temporary accommodation. I agree entirely with what what the mayor says. He doesn't touch on this particular point. Because we will be better able to cope with those for whom we have a duty if we are not equally at the same time trying to cope with those whom we do not have a duty.
So I I take issue here with the word overly generous. I mean, I, you know, Bedford Borough Council might be better than neighbours, but I wouldn't say it's overly generous. And I think there's some some, I, you know, I don't, I I would, I would want to be seeing like actual, like real evidence of of how, you know, of, you know, people coming from other areas, you know, I'm sure that there's a there's a net migration from central beds, for example, who, you know, thoroughly hasn't had a lot of homeless services. And I think that's something that's very easily tackleable. I guess I I just want to kind of, you know, as I say, that word overly generous, I I don't, I don't see the council housing people they don't have a duty to in terms of accepting main duty when they when they hadn't got one. I think generally speaking, we're still seeing a trend where you're more likely, you know, you're much more likely to be told there isn't a duty to house you rather than to be told that there is one when you're, when there actually isn't, if that makes. Yeah, I I I don't, I don't know that this is, I I I think they need to kind of just go back to the actual evidence here and work out, okay, how much of an issue is this in reality? Because I don't think it's, you know, I don't know, I don't think it's as widespread as they're saying it is.
I think it's going to be similar to the way that Lee struggled to sort of differentiate between YTA is higher here and in very similar areas. It's going to be the same with people coming to Bedford from other areas. It's it's going to be hard to pinpoint, is that because we've got a Christmas winter wonderland this year? Or is it because we've got a new Tesco's on the High Street or whatever it might be? It it's difficult to pinpoint whether it's down to, you know, the council's practices or whether it's down to shopping or outreach services. And actually, there's better soup on in in Bedford, like it's just, it is so difficult to pinpoint.
And I think something that I think they have picked up upon, and I think I I remember the mayor asking a question in a previous meeting, I can't remember which one, where, you know, you have this issue where neighbouring authorities are placing people in Bedford, you know, you know, funded by, you say Milton Keynes has been one we're aware of doing it. That is, you know, you kind of have this like, almost like ridiculously cynical warfare, financial warfare going on between councils where they kind of try and throw the most complicated people to the other area in the hope that they don't come back. And I think that's something which I'm I'm planning to do in F O I on, asking how many people does Bedford house in Milton Keynes in T A and how many people do Milton Keynes house in Bedford? Uh, and I think, you know, I think that that's a real problem. And again, you know, London as well, you know, this is another issue which I don't think Lee mentioned is London put a lot of people in Luton, but they are, they are also putting people in Bedford. And again, you have this same problem of just that just putting the extra strain on 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 housing resources, um because, you know, Bedford's technically not too far away from London, I guess, for contact with family and stuff. So I I think there's a whole world of stuff here which is like, isn't being thought through. Or we don't have the information to really make conclusions yet, but it would be something worth looking into, like in a lot of detail. Because I think this is where this is for me, is where homeless and services in Bedford need to be responding to. This is the issue. And this is the one that funders should be looking to kind of enable to happen.
That is my basic point.
Lee, I believe you want to come in.
So apologies, Chair, now.
Oh, no.
Unless there was a specific question.
Okay, no, right, Dave.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, thank you councillor Moon for his comments. Um, we do have to look at what the consequence of what he's suggesting it is um about the seventy eight people we had rough sleeping in the borough. But I was going to make some more uh general comments about the the report and the numbers. So it does look, I haven't done the correlation, but it does look as there's a correlation between where we are um and where the uh where your proximity to London and access to London. Um, the further away you are, there seems to be less you have with less access. Uh, and that may be the 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 knock on effect and the figures we can see at the fourteen percent, I think it is, um that's happening in London. So that's that's something to consider. Um, we also have local authorities and we know that, um, for example, I believe Luton has got over a hundred, they they're saying they're going to and rent or purchase properties in Bedford uh to actually put some of their people in temporary accommodation. And we know that other local authorities pushing, London authorities particularly are pushing out. And I think we do need to have a um agreed across the all of the local authorities about this shunting uh of people away. Um, if a local authority puts its, puts some people here for three years, they then become our residents and we have to deal and cope and support them uh moving forward in in to be that, so into being having a second um accommodation.
So for me, this is another reason to be like grateful that we've got this local authority. I think a lot of local authorities would simply, you know, they would simply respond in kind by shunting people further up north. And and I haven't seen, I I'm not aware of anyone in Bedford being offered permanent accommodation outside unless they've particularly expressed that wish. Whereas, you know, you know, here in Luton, there are people housing up in Hull and, you know, kinds of like all over the place. So I think, I think again, like this is where the 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 kind of the the people who are influencing this this policy, the mayor and, you know, kind of other councillors on this committee do need just kind of, you know, praising for the fact that that and 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 Lee Fankho and the offices for not being that cynical and kind of taking that cynical approach. But and ultimately, that's for local voluntary sector services to really kind of help the council out, I think, in that sense. And I think, as as I say, there's a number of ways that could be tackled to to kind of try and stop that that kind of migration off. Because what happens is obviously is every single person who's who's displaced then has to lose all their support network. So kind of everyone loses from it. Yeah, again, there's some more interesting stuff here.
So I think it's a much bigger problem. And councillor Moon, and I've talked about this, I think we agree that um the housing market needs some serious fixing. Um, it's not in the right place. And he's nodding, so I'm not putting words in his mouth. So thank you, councillor Moon. Um, and I think just looking at some of the fringes, it needs an overall uh address and a proper one. Just saying we need three hundred thousand houses doesn't actually give a solution to this. We need three houses, a thousand houses, we need the right types of houses in the right types of places. Um, and that's not all in Bedford Borough, but we do need a high proportion of social and affordable houses so that we can support that. Um. Thank you, Lee, for the report. I think it leaves lots of information, uh lots of information we can use. Um, and there is a really clustering around um the towns Luton, Milton Keynes herself. I think the other thing it highlights is it's large towns. So Medway's close proximity to London or closer proximity, but of course Medway is five smaller towns. So it does seem to be larger towns attract people. Though, of course, we do have to um have a uh a local connection or we need to check that how, what we do. The information I've seen, Lee, does say we actually check for local connection uh in terms of that, uh but we need to be that maybe some authorities are much, much tougher with their local connection uh to support them. I I don't know, that's something you know, Lee, or something we could investigate.
We, um, so in terms of the statutory approaches, then if um if somebody has a statutory entitlement, they can approach any local authority um at the moment. However, we will encourage them to uh apply to an area they've got a connection with, unless there's some real reason why they can't do that. Um, also, in in terms of people that are approaching that that are rough sleeping. Uh, again, that, you know, the team are quite thorough. They will, you know, try to establish the person's circumstances. Um. I mean, I I am aware of at least one person in in the last um two or three weeks that arrived because they'd been advised by a charitable organisation in London that if you went to Bedford, you might be able to get accommodation there. That particular person, um, we did encourage them to return to London and assisted them to get back there. So so the the team are not just accepting anybody um at face value. And also, um, there is a verification process. So before we will accept somebody, accept somebody, we make sure that they are rough sleeping, um particularly if it's somebody that's not already known to the service and and isn't from the local area. So. So this is where I think we're getting this confusion in terms between homeless people generally and and people who are rough sleeping. But I mean, not seen. And again, you know, there there's this question of, you know, is is Bedford accepting people it doesn't have a duty to? I I have not seen Bedford accept a duty for someone that does not have a duty to house. And obviously, local connection is is more complicated than just sending someone back to the home area. You know, as Lee's kind of said, they, you know, if someone's fleeing abuse, for example, you know, the the authority, the approach is the one that has to take the duty. But I I haven't, you know, I kind of, again, I'd be kind of frustrated to see this kind of this idea being given much weight um of of Bedford not housing people that doesn't have to. As I say, for me, the balance is still that it's it's how, it's not housing people when it should be much more often than it's than it is housing people when it shouldn't be. I I just can't think of anyone that's been housed when there wasn't a duty to house them.
I think I think what they're getting fused here as well, and maybe specifically the mayor, is that when offering section one eight eight duty, um, local connection doesn't come into play until we're looking at permanent accommodation.
Yeah, I mean, so the, I mean, the they they can, in theory, they can, they can refer people back within a few weeks, I guess. You know, I mean, that's, again, I'm not, yeah. I haven't seen it work in action, but um I think that's, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's that, there there seems to be a bit of a myth here going on that that the people sort of flocking into Bedford and Bedford's accepting them when they they don't have to.
For me, I felt like he was treading that sort of fine line of, you know, our housing office do a vigorous sort of job to sort of make it clear that, you know, we're not just letting anyone in, but we are also abiding by the law. And then again, he says something like good and then ruins it with this whole idea of verifying whether you're rough sleeping, like, there's there's so much potential, Lee. If we can just lose the end sentences where we talk about, you know, not following the law and whatnot, it would be fantastic.
We 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 try to make sure that it 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 isn't easy to get that accommodation because the team are conscious of the cost. There's so much like veiled stuff going on. Why didn't, first of all, why don't they just say, yeah, actually, you know what, lots of other councils don't follow the law, you know? I mean, it's, why don't, why not just like let themselves just say it out loud? You know, it's just, you know, there there are going to be neighbouring authorities which are gatekeeping and and people are ending up in Bedford because of it. So this is kind of like, as I say, they're kind of painting themselves into a corner just by not being open about the situation. The reality of of homelessness in 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 Britain is that most local authorities will try to stop you applying to them one way or another. And if Bedford follows the law, then it's making itself a target, you know, but but there's there's legitimate ways of responding to that and there's there's illegitimate ones. So, yeah, making it more more difficult than it needs to be, I think.
Chair, could I just ask if I have a conversation with Lee outside the meeting about which charities? Because we probably need to talk to them.
Hmm.
It is totally unfair in Bedford Borough.
Okay, I, um, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if we know which charity it was, but um.
If we can find out, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, because it's certainly not helping us at all when uh when we've got such a large number requiring temporary accommodation because of rough sleeping. Any more comments? No. I mean, it is particularly noticeable, um, as Lee has said, that on table five point eight uh the differences and between those that are closer to London than those that are further away. I mean, just looking at North Somerset, it's a naught point naught eight percent, and yet Milton Keynes is naught point eight percent. Um, which is, um, you know, a a big, a big difference. And then, of course, we're on naught point five two. So we've got a a big problem on our hands that we are trying our very best to resolve. Now, thank you, Lee. In which case, then that's the uh end of the meeting and thank you everybody for attending.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lee, because both those reports were yours and a lot of work went into it.